I know, and I'm glad we did it though. We've got it done.
Yes. Well, that makes sense. Rusty's not?
Yeah.
Okay. What's that? Look, I'm really glad the camera isn't here because
It is.
This is the prison here day. We have to be stressing.
Oh, oh, I was gonna say it is the camera, this one is, but nobody sees this one but us. It won't be on YouTube.
Okay, it is ten oh one. We have a full board, we have a full administrative staff, this is quite exciting. And we have our police chief. We have Mark from the Seaway Department College. We have Mr. Keith with us. Good morning all. So, we usually open with public comment time, Rusty.
I just had two questions. Um, one, what, what is the procedure for payment checks? I got the letter about my payment, but I didn't, I've never seen a payment check.
If you got a letter from Jordan,
Yeah.
then it's either at the tax collectors and or she's processed it and I should have it, I don't remember if I've written one. I think I did write one to you guys actually. To Anne already.
I do, I think I do, so it should be in the mail, actually.
I think, I remember doing that.
Well, yeah, well, but it would have been, that would have been over a week ago, that would have been after the last meeting, so.
Interesting.
Okay.
Well.
So if you haven't gotten it, then I would talk to the US Postal Service.
Okay.
I would have held on to it and let you pick it up yourself, but. But I can, I can look for the date.
It was just an update on the vote that was taken for enough on the Rochester Road and
Uh huh.
Is there progress being made, but what's the status?
It, it, as you drive by, it doesn't appear that progress is being made.
Right.
Although I know one of the two properties at least does have a dumpster.
We don't know.
Around the edge of it, so we don't know, but there is a deadline set at the end of August, so. We'll be, uh, we, we did notify them way back when, and let them know that, you know, we don't need a daily update or a weekly update or need to take your energy and your time and
Goodbye, yeah, okay, good.
End of August.
End of.
Okay.
A form of update. Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, um, do we have anyone online?
We have James Graham, who I imagine is waiting for the signature and the thing on the CPA, CPA GNA, NH, oh my god. And then Blake is there, um, for the Boy Scout thing, when you get to that.
Okay. And we can move right on to Mark, if you want, Mark, how do you say your last name again?
However, however you want. Adonche.
Adonche, okay. Come on up and let's sort of see what we can do with you.
Bella, just how it sounds, I know.
And then we can move on to some of the folks that are here and let them go about their daily business. So you're here to update us on the liquor license and the belongings on out at the Seaway, yes?
Yeah, exactly, I wanted to kind of get on the same page and understand, uh, the town's concerns. And I had a conversation, uh, about why I'm here instead of Wicked Tasty, which is whatever, um, the town line needs to feel comfortable serving at the Seaway, I would like to memorialize the contract with our vendor, which we already have a contract with Wicked Tasty, but we'll
Edit it.
We'll make an amendment to that, and then moving forward, if, you know, if or when we change vendors, we understand the concerns of the town and can keep those
Okay.
within the contract, so right now the contract states that our food and beverage vendor, uh, they want to pursue a liquor license has to follow all of the laws and rules that the state sets for.
Okay.
Um, I, I think it's also helpful, maybe, there are kind of two situations that that we should be talking about. One is events in the summertime.
Mm hmm.
And I think that can be kind of a, a quick separate note at the end, what we're talking about right now is, uh, Wicked Tasty will operate only when we're operating in the winter time as a food and beverage vendor for our guests.
Okay.
They will serve a full menu and only be open when we're open.
Mm hmm.
So there are no plans to stay open in the evening. Right now, we have a curfew on alcohol at the Seaway anyway at ten thirty. But, uh, as it, as the plan is right now and the agreement of the contract is they're open when we're open. So, this year living seventy-two operating days, year before ninety. Um, we're open ninety-four every day with the exception of Christmas. So Wicked Tasty will follow that, they'll be serving a full menu and, uh, the request of the state is to serve beer fine. And that's also an application to the college where we don't serve. I think that clarification is hopefully helpful, I think there was an idea that through the renovation of the lodge, it's gonna change some of the operation. It doesn't, doesn't really change um, any of the seating capacity, it's really just, if, if you ever wanted to stop in, it just opened up the space and made it easier to run with a smaller staff. Which, uh, at least that was key in, in getting a new, uh,
A new vendor.
New vendor.
It looks less like a cafeteria.
Yeah, you could, you could, yeah, yeah, right, it's a little more open and it's a little like, uh, event rentals, I think more attractive.
Yeah.
But this is the same contract and the same operating circumstance that previous liquor licenses have been approved by the town when, when it was operated by, uh, Thirty Trails and I, maybe the barbecue place before that, but I don't have any copies of contracts, uh, that far. So on that, I don't know.
Sean, did, did you wanna jump in here, do you have concerns that they should know about?
No, I mean, I think that the, you know, liquor license itself and the contract is these
Pretty straight.
standard procedures, um, but you know, I know that Mark spoke last time we were here, that, you know, they, um, you know, the, um, point was making more that people weren't supposed to be served that thing, so, you know, and you know, I mean, with any, uh, business that holds a liquor license, they know that if they get caught, or if something comes back to them, they'll be kicked off. It's, um, you know, and if, if that should happen, you know, the, the state would probably refer to that suspension, that vendor's license, but during days, and at that point, they would notify the select board that such a suspension occurred and it'd be the board's you know, privilege to write into the liquor commission, say, hey.
We're done. And, and so thank you. We also are, are considering a town liquor ordinance. Okay, so my suspicion is it'll probably pass by this board, you know, so that'll be not, not these, what is it called, wicked tasty? Well, directly affect them, but it will affect the college if things are happening on the slopes or in the parking lot or on the road.
Right, and, and, I mean, to that point, and to some of the comments Sean has said to me, we, we probably, um, this sea, this season, if you know, hopefully, uh, select board will recommend the state that we can, that Wicked Tasty can do this liquor license, and if that's the case, it's a learning curve, because for the last four years there hasn't been any liquor license there, which basically means it's a little bit of a free roam, so now with the ordinance and with us wanting to support our vendor, there's gonna be a different conversation surrounding it, communication to us and signage that, hey, it's not kind of a look the other way anymore, it's, uh, you can't do that here, you're violating our food beverage vendor, and now, you know, the town ordinance, so I think that will be, uh, an important thing that we think about helping on side it at the list and in the parking lot.
I'm sure you're thinking about side it, did you? Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think the liquor commission will probably push you to put sides out, because they won't be able to, you know, there'll be a certain umbrella that the licenses for, and if they out of that umbrella, it's wicked tasty violation.
Right, exactly, I know we have those, there's no alcohol beyond, beyond twenty, nine, that they require, and you will want to probably expand to just remind people that, that it's not just for Wicked Tasty, it's the town ordinance and, uh,
Yeah.
you know, drinking on the slopes is against rules.
Not a good idea.
We monitor the list very closely, state law that you're not allowed to have no container in Seaway, so we'll stop the lift, we're gonna press the load and tell them clear it doesn't, it really doesn't happen very often, but, uh, it, it does every once in a while, uh, somebody would kind of use their head.
Thank you.
Uh, the other thing I'll note is, just in terms of liquor licensing, this is for Wicked Tasty to hold the liquor license while we're operating during the season. Outside of the season, we make any caterer or anybody who rents the lodge, if they wanna sell alcohol, they need to hold the liquor license, so if someone rents the lodge and is throwing a party and not going to sell alcohol, they don't have to have a liquor license, but the contract that we hold with any rental is that they have a certified bartender and alcohol service stops at ten thirty and is, doesn't go on the 6th.
So, do you ever have parties where it's a BYOB?
I
and those kind of roles, so you don't have a bartender and you don't have a liquor license, how is that getting?
So those are, those rentals, if it's gonna be BYOB, they can bring them here, but they need to have certified bartending.
We still need the bartender.
That would, yeah, that would be dead, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, I put a single on it.
So, Sean, if, my recommendation is that when we pop it, noticing the application, if, yeah. You were concerned about sort of a, an expanded alcohol service potentially associated with the, with the application and that that was posed to them. A concern about public safety, that there'd be people drinking at night or people drinking in the parking lot, and people drinking and then driving. Uh, is, are, are the terms that we're hearing here where uh, it's only gonna be open during nine to four during the Seaway hours and, uh, if there are private events, they'll be either a bartender or, or, you know, or someone else holding a liquor license there, does that satisfy you that, that the
Yeah, you know, I mean.
public safety concerns are?
Because Seaway can only implement so many policies and only have so many contracts, and at some point, like any other business or, you know, whatever, they have to rely on people who really wants, right, you know, I mean, just because you, you know, like the contract says, you know, they, they have a bartender there, well, I mean, that bartender isn't out very around checking everything, and that's where the ordinance comes into play because now it's not on the college, it's on us, it's on the town. And, you know, we find people in the parking lot that are there for a wedding, but choose not to buy alcohol or not to get alcohol inside, drink it in the parking lot, well, now that's a different game, and it's not on them.
Okay.
You know, I mean, the, the yeah, the uh, the onus on people to do the right thing can only go as far as it can go within the contract and within what the law of the state requires, so um, you know, somebody makes the wrong choice and gets caught, well, but that's, I don't foresee that being a, you know, uh, need for the board to call the liquor commission, uh, you know, if, if it happens, I will probably say, hey, Mark, this is what happened, I gave so-and-so ticket, ju- just so he knows, that way he can let other vendors know, hey, if, or not the vendor, but you know, he has another wedding coming up, he can say to the, the people, listen, telling you, rules are the rules, and it, it's really your responsibility to tell me sure people and if they're caught in the parking lot drinking, then it's, you know, they're gonna be, they're gonna be able to, it's, you know, a hundred dollars if I am ready, so, yeah. And you know, I mean, I think that like I said, should that, that's a conversation, I'll just make Mark aware that it happened, and, you know, but there again, he can only
Right.
get it out there so many times and notify his bartenders and tell these people, hey, you know.
And I suspect there will be a learning curve because it's been a, a number of years where it's been a different ballgame.
But based on the, the description of the operation that we're hearing here, you're comfortable with the town withdrawing its objection?
Yes.
To the, uh, to the liquor license?
Yes, and I, I am very comfortable with contracts and
Okay.
um, you know, the, the steps that Mark and the college have taken to sort of modeling, hopefully make this work and work effectively and efficiently, but also, um, you know, protect themselves and, uh, you know, any other patrons that are there.
Do we, do we need a motion to, uh,
I think we should.
When was the last time we rolled a letter, do we need?
I think.
I just sent an email to the, um, state of Hampshire woman, so.
Yeah.
She filled it out, so. That's, I can just tell her, once you vote, you should make a vote.
We'll all move that we withdraw our objection to the granting of the liquor license on, on the big, um, on the basis of the terms that Mark has described, just and you said you were gonna memorialize this in some way?
Yeah, we'll put that in the contract, we'll make it in the contract, I think most of this stuff are in the contract, but we'll make sure that it's, uh, more specific, and then we'll actually submit this exact same thing to the planning board, yeah, next month. So, which, which, I think it's just helpful for everybody to understand what's going on there.
Same page, yeah.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ben. Further comments? All those in favor say aye.
Uh huh.
And Judy aye. Pass, so.
I was just gonna make one comment about the signage, you know, once, once this Seaway gets their signage up and that kind of thing, you know, then it's you know, if staff members should happen to see people drinking in the parking lot, they can say, hey, what? There's signs, and I'm telling you, once if we just come through, you're gonna be able to, yeah, then you pull just aside and you get on the seat.
Yes. We did it, we wanted to. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now.
Make sure you get your vest and your hat.
Yeah.
Now, we'll figure out.
That'd be very good.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mark, we really appreciate the cooperation.
Yeah, a business card.
I don't, but I still want, I gotta hold up the state, you said you can't reach him, and I can't. I'll send you an email, so you have my, and I'll forge a email that I sent.
You have my?
I do.
Okay.
You did it over a couple times. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Bye, Mark.
Thanks, Parker.
Super.
And that is ready.
Uh huh.
Um, CPCNH, we do have
Do it, do it.
Let's just CPCNH.
Uh huh.
We do have the memorandum. We need to add to it, uh, we had several discussions, I was left with apparently the wrong impression that we decided not to have an authorized officer, but there does seem to be a contact point, and uh, we discussed having Deana be that contact point. She will not be directly making decisions, she was pretty clear that she didn't want that authority, but that she can relay information onto the board.
Right, but, but it is called the authorized, authorized officer. This is what the position is called. And most towns have their town administrator, um, doing this, my job will be to report back to you guys. I can go to the meetings, I can zoom in on the meetings. I need to bring stuff back to you, there's three different sections of whether you can say yes or no, that I can make a decision on. I've already requested no on all of them, I want to bring everything back to you guys for a decision, I don't want the responsibility, um.
But you're comfortable with the additional work associated with this?
I'm
A little bit of extra work.
I'm comfortable because I can zoom in on a meeting, so that I don't have to physically drive all over the place for it and all that. And, and I think, yeah, it sounded from talking to Mr. Hatch, um, you know, if it ends up being a bigger amount of time, well then, I'll make sure to let you guys know and we may have to rethink it, but.
Pass the buck, as it were.
Yeah, there you go.
Sure.
So that's what this did, I filled my name in and my contact stuff, and then you guys have all these places you have to sign.
Sign or initial?
Sign, um, and or put, I, I forgot to put a date in one, but there's one place you forgot to sign.
Okay.
Or we missed, or whatever you wanna call it.
So we can, um.
Oh yeah, and we, I also had to make this little memorandum that included the policies, which you have to sign. You should sign, we need.
Are we comfortable with uh, pointing Deana to be, be the authorized officer contact point over CPCNH?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I would have thought that it would be the position, the select board administrative assistant, it could rather have been Deana herself individually. I, I would think in some sense it would get a tougher sense of it, oh, wow.
Well, I am, and it is my position, it's, it's in here both ways, it's in my position
Okay.
and then by my name.
Yes, so, um, I don't think we need a formal vote, but it is consensus of this board, I'm seeing heads, you know, like a threat for everyone.
I think, I think that's a good approach.
Okay, so James, did you have something else, or are we finally finished?
Uh, no, I was just here in case there were any questions, um, it looks like since Deana's spoken with Mr. Hatch, it sounds like they're all on the same page and we can go forward.
Excellent. Okay. We are moving forward, we will attach authorization signatures.
And I'm filling in no on the other page, all those little places.
Okay, go, that sounds good.
So, yeah, no. Yes, okay, great.
And so, jumping all around.
Hey, uh, James, if you're still on, are, are we, uh, do can you give us any update on, on timing on this, did we make the cutoff for these guides and, uh,
Yes.
do you have a sense about when, if, wh- when you anticipate people actually being able to buy power from your CPCNH and lawn?
Yeah, so I, I think, uh, once they get this, uh, documentation, I think we're good to go, and they're, they were talking about, um, October at when the next launch would be, and before that happens, um, they will be communicating with all the customers, as far as I understand, but, um, we're gonna keep watching to make sure we know every step, that, what's going on. Um, but, uh, either we'll hear from them first, or, uh, the customers will hear that, yeah, actually, no, we're gonna hear from them first, because we have to decide what the default rate is gonna be.
Yeah, I would imagine in connection with the rollout, that people would be getting letters or be getting some sort of communication, letting them know if the switch over and giving them the ability to opt out, I wonder if, uh, if you guys might wanna do, um, and connect, you know, and it maybe slightly in advance of that, if it makes sense to do any kind of a, uh, a public meeting where, you know, people have a chance to ask questions, or, or maybe after that, I don't know, I
Yeah.
be doing any, any other kind of public outreach, because I, I'm guessing some people will get this and be confused by it, or haven't been following along, or, um, maybe not.
Right. Yeah, no, I agree, I think, a- actually, as you say that, I think there is, there is a public hearing that has to take place anyway about setting rates for line.
Yes, I think there is, James.
And we'll get information on that. Um, but I agree that, yeah, it would be good to kind of give the town a heads up that these letters are coming and that sort of thing, so he will, we'll be keeping an eye on it. So.
Excellent. Thank you, James, for, uh, all the work that you and your team have put in on this, that's great, we appreciate it.
Sure, thank you, guys.
Thank you. And so we have one more person waiting for a discussion, um, we've got Blake Allison wants to talk about something that I think we touched on. I'm not sure if we ever made a decision, the Conservation Commission has a Boy Scout troop, uh, an Eagle project to repair the scout camp, which is in the town forest, as I understand it. So, um, I'm not sure if you guys wanna have a discussion of that, I know Blake is on, he can give you a little more information, or how do you feel about it?
To my own extent, I don't.
How would you like to do this?
Can I give a quick history of it, and then maybe you can just make your decision?
Maybe us?
I know that the Conservation Commission is looking for permission, or asking the board, um,
To support.
to support that, uh, get fixed back up. Um, and Sean was here to give a brief history, because he was one of the original scout masters that helped do this, actually, it might have been a scout at the time, but no, no, I don't think it was that long ago, but anyways, in my years of being here, we have had, um, only the Boy Scout troop has requested the use of it. When this was first approved way back when, it was approved that, yes, the scouts could build this camp, but that other people could use it if as long as they got a permit, so they had to come into the town, fill a form out. They had to be a group, they couldn't just be like, you know, a family of twenty kids that wanna go hang out out there, it would have to be the Girl Scout troop or something like that. Um, and they would fill out the form, they would provide insurance, they would have to get, um, a burn permit if they were gonna have a fire, you know, there's all these rules they had to go by and commit to. Um, but, you know, I think it's been a handful of times since I've been here for twenty whatever years. Um, and it's mostly just been, it's always just been the Boy Scouts that have used it, um, so, but it's very rundown and they wanna bring it back up. Um, so the, the board, the previous boards have already given permission for this.
Okay.
So I think that was, that was the long-winded approach, long-winded point I was trying to make, but, um, so, and then Blake can certainly speak to how the Conservation Commission feels.
Blake, you're up.
Yes, I'm here.
Can you turn that up a little?
And, can you? Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, we've been the Conservation Commission has been mulling this over off and on for a couple of years now, we were actually approached before um, Sebastian Buzarsky met with us at the beginning of June um, a year ago by another parent who is interested in perhaps revive, reviving the camp. So, um, Sebastian's concrete proposal to do something as part of the um, community service uh, portion that he has to fulfill to attain the rank of Eagle Scout has forced us to come to a decision, or one way or the other. Um, Jen, the consensus of the commission is that the camp if it's not going to be rebuilt, should be dismantled because it represents an attractive nuisance. And we don't wanna take responsibility for that, and I should think the town wouldn't want to either. Um, Sebastian's proposal is to um, rehabilitate the existing facility by um, removing substandard materials and rebuilding the tent platform and, um, so-called lean-to the fire pit adding in some benches, and, uh, if it were to be reestablished as an overnight facility, the sanitary um, arrangements would have to be upgraded, the current outhouse is not acceptable. Um, fortunately, you know, we have Matt Stevens on the commission who is, uh, un- associated with the Appalachian Trail people, so he's up to date on what constitutes um, standard practice for um, outhouses and so forth. So, I guess it's a question of, um, we do not, well, just backing up slightly, we do not wanna take responsibility for managing who uses the property.
Right.
Um, the, we don't have enforcement powers under our, um, under our state authorization, and so we think that kind of thing is more properly um, done by the town. Um, done by the town, um for which there's precedent as, you know, there you have to get applications to use. The Hughes Brook. Um, car top won't launch if you if you needed to stay there overnight. Um. This one thing that comes to mind, but we would expect that the town would um revisit the. Usage forms, which apparently. Dina's saying do exist. Um, and and make sure that they're acceptable to.
Yep.
To what the town says. Um. And um otherwise, you know, we would take this matter up again. Um. We have a meeting July first. Um, take this matter up again and uh if with a favorable vote. Um. Let Sebastian get started, although he has said if the commission were to deny his request. Or the select board were to deny the request, um, he would then. Um, shift gears and make his project removing. The existing camp and restoring the site, um which we're fine with as well. He does have a grant proposal in with the Lime Foundation, I believe for a couple of thousand dollars. Uh, for materials, if rebuilding is is the path that's chosen. And I certainly think the Conservation Commission is open to helping fund. Um, his work depending on on what's needed. So I don't know what questions might remain from you at this point, but I can help.
Blake, it sounds like there's two options. One rehabilitate the the facility and make it usable and update the forms and update. Update our process so that it so that it works, and the other is to take it down and clear the space out. Does the Conservation Commission have a recommendation as between those two options?
We haven't gotten that far and and frankly, David, the problem was when Sebastian met with us at the beginning of June. We did not have a quorum. So we couldn't take a vote then, even if we had wanted to. Um. And that's why this has been pushed out a little bit. Um. I think in general, there is an openness among commission members to see this spot reused or. Rehabilitated and revitalized, so um. That what we what we need from you at this point is an authorization to go forward. Um, if the chosen option is to revive the site, there's just no point in. Taking a vote on uh next Monday to go ahead. And then come back and find out that you folks have reservations.
Right.
About um. That course of action, so.
What you're asking for is us to to is a resolution that says. The select board is okay with this being rehabilitated, subject to the Conservation Commission review and approval of the final plans and arrangements.
Yes, I I think that's fair, but of course, ultimately, um. The conditions of uses are left to the select board.
Right.
So I I think I would attach that to any resolution to to make sure. Um, it's clearly stated that we can't just go ahead and. Do everything and say, okay, come and use the site. It's ultimately that rests with the town, I think.
They have to get a permit through the town. Yeah.
Right.
I've got a little bit of a concern. I haven't been out there recently. It's not close to anything. It's way out.
Yeah, it's wonderful.
Yeah, well, I it didn't get much use in the beginning, but like what out there. Fact that it did uh deteriorate suggests lack of use. Is there?
Both lack of use and lack of care.
Right.
I'm concerned, so my question is, is is there gonna be somebody who wants to use it or will use it? And maintain it and keep it up in uh future.
Well, there's a couple of things, Ben. Um, first, the commission spent a considerable amount of money. Um, two seasons ago to reconstruct footbridge access. Uh, from the Orfordville roadside and from the Mud Turtle Pond roadside. Uh, prior to that, getting to the site was the challenge. Um, the other thing is, I would bet that majority of people in town don't even know it's out there. Because.
That's why, that's why we don't get a lot of requests for permit use.
Right, and I think if the if the camp were. Um, rehabilitated and people in town were made aware that it's available for use, you might see more. I'm not gonna swear on a stack of scout manuals that that would be true, but um. I I think it's, if there's an interest, there's should.
It's in the town forest. Sorry.
Give him an op- an opportunity to do that because um under the current situation, there. It's not not usable.
Right.
Um, and the other piece of this is just a reminder that Mud Turtle Pond Road. Um. Is a class six emergency road, I think, as of the two thousand twelve town meeting, Dina.
Yeah, I yeah, my bad. Well, good memory.
It um, so that would have to be.
Right.
Ma- maintained in accordance with the vote of town meeting membership at that time. In order to, in order to provide um emergency teams with access. Out as far as the scout camp, should that be needed.
And yeah, I was just gonna say, part of that road is an emergency lane.
Right.
Yeah.
We have a a map showing the location.
Do we have a a map?
Do we have a map?
I don't know how, well, I'd have to go look on and see if it's on the map somewhere, but I'm sure that, do you guys have a? Do you guys have a brochure that shows where the scout camp is?
Um, I can't access that right now without disrupting.
Right now.
But we do have a trail map um that was updated by Elizabeth Kilmark's. Few years ago now.
Yeah, okay.
Um, and I'm don't remember off the top of my head whether that update.
Yeah.
Shows the site, but I will retrieve it and get it over to you, Dina, so you can disseminate it to the board.
Okay. Where it is, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it's a great site. I've been out there a couple of times. It is, it's a great site, and I think this is a worthy project.
What David said and adding to that, that there is a permit that will go through the board. It's approval process and I would hope we don't limit it to just lime residents, other scout troops in the area, in the upper valley. And I know that overnighting, tenting, hiking is really coming back into vogue. Lot of young people are enjoying it, and we might get some nice use there, so.
I I'd like to see the use and I'd like to see a plan for making sure it does get used and not just. Go back to the way it is now. Um.
Um, yeah, you can plan that all you want, but there's no way to prove it, but I think if you. It if it's going to be offered to other scout troops that don't just aren't just here. You know, I I think that's a change, definitely, and that's good, though.
That would be an expansion, but I think you would then find.
Yeah.
I mean, I know people go in Hanover on some of the trail sites there.
Right.
I could see that happening here. I I certainly would be in favor. Um, we'll have to go back to the recording to hear what David said.
No, I I'll move that we uh that we um. Approved the rehabilitation of the scout camp, subject to the Conservation Commission's review and vote to approve it. And and uh and um articulation of some sort of a plan for uh for its rehabilitation. You you know, in accordance with what Bonnie was, like described, getting the getting the sanitation facility.
Right.
Wind up getting and we'll check with Dina and making sure that the the uh use form is in.
Yeah, I I'll send all that to Blake.
I I will second that.
Thank you.
That Ben has some uh concerns.
My concerns, uh five with all that. Just, I would like to see also a plan on how it's gonna be used and is anybody coming? It's just deteriorates rapidly as it did last time.
Yeah, but then this guy's done his eagle scout project and put it back in the shade, but nobody.
Yeah.
Well, then maybe I can get the ex Eagle Scout person doing a deep.
Right, that's right, that's right.
Let's see, let's give it a chance.
No, I have no problem with it. Negative impact, but it's a feel-good thing, so.
Let's keep our fingers crossed.
Do you get with that, Blake?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
David aye.
Judy aye, okay. It is approved. Uh, we'll get you something and.
Barbelist.
You wanna take up this thing from David?
Thanks, Blake.
Thank you, everybody. Be in touch.
Yeah, that's just a letter you can take. I don't, you, you know.
Yeah, but why don't we?
I wish I tossed it in last time. That man has concerns for the fire station.
It's the boat.
We need to check with Aaron, but uh my sense is they don't want this.
Well, they don't.
They don't, and they were.
That they do, but I don't know why they couldn't communicate.
They.
Well, but so they.
Well, okay, wait a minute.
Do what you want.
They're not having conversations because Mister Russ is extremely upset, but um.
Talked to him, calmed down, and said he liked the the boat back so he could restore it in his barn.
Right, and originally, when this first happened, your attorney told you. That he had it as a tax exempt. He gave it, it was a tax exempt receipt was given to him, that it's the town's and the town can sell it. Aaron wanted to sell it, so I guess you either decide. Whether Aaron can sell it or whether you just give it back to the guy.
Yeah, we should ask Aaron.
He's not gonna get, I know Aaron doesn't want it.
I don't, I don't think they want it. Yeah.
I don't believe it has value in the condition.
It's it's deteriorated. The guy gave it to us in good faith. You think we should give it back to?
Right.
And I hate to go against town council, but. Let's just make.
That doesn't create a problem for us.
No.
Creates a problem for him. If he gets it back and and he's taking a deduction on his tax return based on having given.
That's his business.
He's he's got a a manager term.
But I don't believe that's it, but either way.
Either way, so let's uh we'll let him know and.
Yes.
We will.
Confirm with Aaron first to make sure that Aaron doesn't have.
Aaron's on vacation, but I'm happy to email him, yep.
Yeah, if if Aaron doesn't want this thing, he doesn't have a a a plan to sell it, then you should just go back to him.
Yes.
Yeah, and and I think part of the problem is there's no undercover place for it.
They're never gonna use it. That's what the problem is. The problem is it's not the appropriate boat for them.
For the for the Connecticut or for any of the ponds.
It's just not the appropriate boat for that particular, whatever they wanna do.
I don't really think it matters what Aaron wants. I mean, let's just give the damn thing back.
Well, unless he has a point to sell.
Well.
You should get a donated item and then turn around and sell it. I don't think that's.
Not if the guy wants it back.
Yeah, Blake, he's he's.
Cause he's gonna give it to somebody else.
Hasn't been used.
That's right.
This was a half a million dollar yacht. And Aaron wanted to sell it, but the hoop money for the town would be one thing. My guess is that this thing is not worth anything.
It sounds like it's pretty deteriorated.
Motor has been used, it's gonna have to be restored, or is it for most values, like the rest of it has mold on it.
Well, and you know that it's not about the value of it, it's about the point. Like Judy said.
I just don't want us to, I'm fine giving it back to God. I just don't want us to. To make a decision on something and then have Aaron come back and as if he pissed off or be upset.
I'll email.
Can it, can you uh?
I'll see if you like.
If we vote on it, we vote to give it back to him and then and and you'll just confirm with Aaron. Aaron's feel has strong feelings that that's a mistake or something that he doesn't wanna do, then I'd be open to reconsider.
Okay.
Yeah, we're not encouraging some kind of.
Yep.
Match, you know, some. I can't think of the real word.
I know what you mean.
So, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we do that, we give it back pending confirmation from Aaron that. There isn't some greater good plan for it. Um. And hopefully we hear from Aaron by email in a few days, and if it's confirmed, we'll just take care of it. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, English.
Can we also send a note to Mister Ross and Mister Paul and John?
That's a great idea.
I I just remind everybody, I was asked to go out.
Yes.
Talk to Mister Russ a couple of years ago. Thought I had been had all this resolved.
Yeah.
And I was surprised to see it pop on its level, I was like, yeah.
I think it's probably nothing is happening with the boat, and I think he's probably.
Yeah, I know.
Drove by and just. Came back to me this. Thank you, Ben, for going out. And so we will also, so we're gonna contact uh Aaron.
Yeah.
Ben, hopefully within apology. Apollo and you let Mister Russ. If there, but it needs to be delivered, we'll figure out how to get it.
Yeah.
Imagine someone trailer.
It is.
So that shouldn't be hard.
You just think beyond the fire station?
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, um. We've got about ten minutes before we think we're gonna. Granted, municipal services, so let's talk. You think we can do the ordinances from the last public hearing um in ten minutes?
I hope so. You already had a big discussion on them.
Um, the prohibiting or placing of snow or yard degree is as it was shown initially. And the open containers and consumption of alcoholic beverages or liquor. Has been slightly modified by town council, uh just I'll be clarifying a couple of issues.
Apparently the conform was stable.
Yes.
Yes.
That's right.
And corrected tempo and.
So you've been put out of the following year.
Dina sent from the from town council who expresses view in other than those changes, the ordinance if you're fine and.
Great.
You know, and and the law would what you expect from this kind of.
How would you like to make a motion, David?
Yeah, I'll move that we approve.
Okay, thank you, Ben. We have further discussions. We have anyone online or room for the discussion? Silence is bold and all those in favor of these two ordinances.
David aye.
And Judy aye. Okay, okay.
Wonder where they go on the fact I wanna be able to get now, you know, my shots.
Practice finding that liquor.
It's all interesting. Even I was about to clarify during cleanup.
That's where everybody throws their cans, bottles, cigarette packs.
Debbie got all done cleaning it up, turned all her bags in, and the next day she saw Tara McGovern out there picking up. You know, she already had a bag of stuff.
I know, it's amazing.
Overnight.
Totally amazing.
Stuff like I go when I'm there all right yesterday, and there's all these empty six packs and they're all, they're all alcoholic beverages. I mean, everyone.
Where everybody goes to cruise, they take the long road going.
But I call it one beer from them.
Effective date, I believe. And this is the uh alcoholic beverages. Is the date that it was voted to be adopted, so that would be today.
Yeah.
You're too late, you missed out.
Well, do you wanna put it off for two weeks?
We'll come look for you by the side of the road. Um, I don't know about.
Okay. They're just both, they'll both be official today.
Will they both be official today? Okay.
Todd is here, he's just grabbing his stuff.
Okay, okay.
We wanna do the manifest roll?
Sure.
Please.
I'll move on.
Now, stop.
Got to be quick, you get it, get ahead of men.
This is today. Right, they just didn't sign the other one last time, so. My treasure gets mad at me when that does.
Yeah.
Two weeks ago and you forgot to sign it, yeah.
Okay, I will second the manifest, what can we do with today's manifest? All those in favor say aye?
Yeah, David aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
Did you do the minutes?
No.
Okay, I was gonna say I missed something.
Do the minutes? How do we feel about the minutes?
Uh, I had some comments, I presume you started.
I did.
She did. I had no problem with those changes, couple of them I can't believe I missed. Okay. I will move the minutes. I need a second, thank you, Ben, all those in favor say aye? Okay. David aye, Judy aye. Let's take a breather. Manifest that we, our successor will be joining us. Yeah. Are we going to need to approve the rationale and fix the audit information?
Well, it's an agreement and usually the chair of the board signs it, um. It just describes what they do for the audit. So, that's what happens, I know, every year you sign this, so. And then we get charged accordingly.
Then all looks fine to me, but what I'm mostly interested in is knowing whether they changed anything from last.
I can ask her, I can ask her.
Prove it, but, but.
Yeah.
Normally, when you send someone a fifteen page detailed document like that, it's a continuation of a prior, you know, it's like this, it's, you know, like a continuation of an arrangement that we've had in prior years, you send them the red line, so they can see if you changed.
Yeah, I assumed because there was nothing highlighted, that nothing changed, but I will check with her. I, I will ask her. I'm pretty sure it has all the same old.
Yeah.
MS forms and municipal requirements that are required every year. But you will sign it please, cause they're coming.
Yeah.
Week after next, I will, yep.
Okay, then I need to uh, come in and do my signing.
Hello?
Hi.
I was, there's a Supreme Court decision that was released this morning that I haven't read yet regarding these institutional exemptions, new one in hospitals on this issue.
Really?
The new part, so I was hoping to print that off, but I seem to have technical difficulty sprinting it.
So, uh, federal Supreme Court decision or, you know, New Hampshire?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So that, that, and, and the email that I received says that they they, they reversed it, so they reversed a Superior Court decision and they said that the, the reason why, if I, if I read the summary correctly, the reason why the Superior Court denied it, it was because it didn't meet all the four tests, the elder trust case. And they said, and the Supreme Court disagreed, so. I, I wanted, I wanted to read that before I hand you a book, but you can't get it.
Do you wanna take a few minutes? Um. If that's important to us, save you another.
Yeah, they have a couple other things they could do.
Couple other things?
Yeah, let me see if I can print it out, I was hoping I could print you a copy of it too.
That'd be great, that'd be great.
Jordan's gonna help you print. Yeah, we're having some trouble with one of the computers, which is the one he works at.
Um. So the state of New Hampshire wants to know if we're gonna do this D R A, which is Department of Revenue Administration, P A Form twenty eight, which I wish we just have names on these forms, but anyway, it's a, it's a taxing of personal property.
Inventory of taxable property form.
And I, I recollect for the past many years, we have not done it.
As long as I've worked here, we have never done it.
I do remember times way long before then.
Uh huh.
When we did.
You used to.
We used to do it. It's.
Mm-hmm, I think the decision was made, from what I understand, when I first came here, that Carol told me, was because of the administrative cost that goes into this time and, and cost, um, and you know, you're asking people to be truthful, and we hope they are, but they're not always, so in the forms, you don't always get what's happened to the property, or we find that we, you know, catch more with, not catch more, get more information with permits and that kinda stuff, so it's just doesn't seem to be valuable info.
I could tell you, because we have it in Orford, they did do this in Orford. But I think it's more of a revenue generator than anything, because people go from them.
And then they get a fine.
Then they get a fine when you get your tax bill.
But I bet if they balance that out against the administrative time and cost, there's no revenue there.
And the form is crazy.
It's silly.
I recall from when I was probably thirty or more years ago, and it's a very convoluted thing, and in a state that claims there are no taxes, it strikes me as being sort of a backroom kind of thing, and it's.
I'll move, we continue with past practice and decline to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ben?
I agree.
Oh, okay, I'll second it, Ben agrees. All those in favor, we all decline.
Thank you.
Thank you for your support, Rusty. Interesting to know.
Now you can sign this little copy, start on the.
There, there are many people that multiple, multiple properties. For the year, I suppose.
Yeah.
And when they forget, I mean, it's hundreds of dollars of the funding.
But it goes to the state, right?
No.
It goes to the town.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause this is a town notification form.
Right, right.
That's what it is.
And the form that you fill out, right.
But note, note also that Orford doesn't have.
Right, you don't, right.
Needs to know what's happening.
Right, right. Cause one of the questions on it is, have you done anything, you know, new to your home to increase the value, have you, that kinda stuff.
Yeah, and in the old, at one, at one point also had a question about personal property, not, not realistic, which.
Probably can't do that anymore.
Pushed me over the edge, I was like, ew, and I did look at this one and I didn't see it there this time, but.
Well, we used to have a personal tax too.
Well, you.
Head tax or whatever, poll tax or whatever you wanna call it. Uh huh.
Well, that's a jolly conversation.
And this aquatics permit is just a notification, you don't have to vote anything, you don't have to do anything, it's just to let you know that the company that is doing the milfoil treatment has notified, has gotten the information they need and the permit from D E S required.
Believe that they're starting.
That's all, oh, you gotta bow, okay, no, it's okay.
Thirty? Is that?
No, that's the friends of the post pond, the milfoil, other people.
Okay.
Yeah, the treatment date has not been set exactly yet.
You might wanna start an organization called Save the Milfoil.
David.
No, David.
I thought I could sell T-shirts.
Yes, you could, actually, you would probably get some papers on that.
I was gonna say something like, well, yeah, like the shirt I have that killed, said Kill the Beavers. It was not a popular item in some, for some people in this town.
Uh, let's see.
There's a guy at a, one of the shooting clubs like you can belong to, that had a Save the Sporting Clones T-shirt.
Sporting place, geez, um, good.
I can attest when uh, now it's probably been fifteen years or more that went south to a family reunion and the main thing of entertainment, if you had all the food, was play shooting. And the little kids, old kids.
Oh, yeah.
In between.
We used to do that all the time.
I was very good at missing everything. Um, okay, here we are, okay, we've done that. Well, let's talk about organizing the bridge reopening celebration, that'll take us a minute or two. Um, Mr. Webster very kindly thought that it would be a great idea, he's contacted people both in line and in Thetford to have music, to have food service. Um, thank you, oh, great, he's uh in and out of the country over the summer. I know if we're gonna have anything in the way of the parade, we're probably gonna need state permits, but I believe that Sean was very discouraging about some kind of a parade from the pond and all the way to the bridge, it would could be tying of the state road, so that's kind of a no go. I'm not sure what we wanna do.
Uh, Dina, I'm much better about doing something when we restore the Edel Bridge than.
Yeah, in, in either case, um, I understand that people will be excited to have everything open.
Right.
If you wanted to do something on the line common, but I think getting to the bridge walking is not a good idea, parade is not a good idea, parking is non-existent.
Well, and he wants bands and dancing on the bridge and fireworks on each end and, I mean, all kinds of stuff.
So, um.
Somebody wants to do some kind of party on the common, let them organize it, but I, in other words, I'm not that comfortable in spending town funds or something like that.
Well, that was gonna be my next question, was like, where's the money coming from for this?
Well, I think he's thinking that everything is gonna be donated, but you're gonna have to have lease coverage, you're gonna have to have, and but I don't wanna be the one that would. And just say if, if he wants to organize activities on the common, there is a common permit he can fill out.
Right.
And we can go from there, and we'll let Dina take it.
I was gonna say, well, well, that's, yes, he was gonna have a ribbon and a band and have the Thetford selectmen and the lime and, you know.
They weren't gonna do it on the date that the bridge is open, so the ribbon's gonna have to go back up because
Right.
They won't be traveling.
I thought it would.
But he wants it.
The bridge, everybody's happy.
Well, yeah, that's what we thought when he first talked about this, but anyways. But I think it's very, right, it's really nice of him, it's, it is connecting to communities again, easier. They've still been connected, but now it's gonna be easier again. But it is a state bridge, it is a state road, it is great, it happens all the time, and.
So if he wants to have an opening celebration on the common.
Right.
Um, we can help him fill out those forms, I know he's got Stella's and the Ariana's. Yeah.
So.
Saying they would have a special bridge menu, but again, now we have no liquor on the common, so.
You have no liquor, you have no commercial entities selling stuff for profit, so.
Yeah, so I think it's a, gonna be tough one. Okay, we need to work on the letters, but I want Ben to second David's motion.
What was David's motion? Was it no, thank you?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Thank him for his offer of saying.
Okay.
It's.
Say any sort of celebration, wouldn't have to be a, a private, you know. Private parties organized, organized and uh, and uh, conducted by private.
There might be protests down there, but there's nothing appropriate.
No, yeah, that's right, there's no white flag, okay, so then second to everybody in favor of this say. All right. And Judy.
Thank you.
I'd like to abstain, but I better.
You better.
The other hand, when we get done repairing the Edel.
Yeah.
That would be, I think, kind of maybe.
Yeah, I know, I'm dying to hear what the fundraiser did.
Precedence, but.
Well, yeah, the Edel Bridge is way different than the bridge that goes across the Connecticut River.
Yeah.
It's historic, it's lime, it's our taxpayers that are spending.
Let's get across it, must be afraid.
Okay, well, I was thinking it was special in a different way, but yes, you're right.
Okay, um, I've been had to uh.
What is, like, Hanover's got this thing where they're just gonna experiment with closing down streets everywhere?
Yeah.
Cause it.
Yeah.
So.
Well, they're rebuilding that whole road. Yeah.
Twenty years ago, more than twenty years ago.
Your flashlight's on, David.
For most of the twenty years that I've worked in Hanover, we all in our department, which was planning zoning and codes, thought that they should close the main street section, where all the restaurants now are pushing out onto the street. And circled around, you didn't have the big trucks going through, they didn't have anything, it's all like church street in Burlington.
In Burlington, yeah.
Space, but it'd be very easy to go around, you could have all kinds of activities, everybody could eat outside.
Right.
Um, and we never, ever, ever got any traction, every three or four years, we would bring it up again. And now the, the new town manager seems to be experimenting with all these different areas, and I'm not sure if like closing Allen Street or a half a block is gonna do anything, but those of us on the outside looking in, don't have the answer. But it is kinda weird.
Well, I always thought it was great to see everybody eating outside, of course, that was COVID.
Yeah.
That's why they started doing that, but some have continued to do it, I was like, wow, this is great, except they're taking up like seven parking spaces. Which there's not enough of anyways.
I know. Yeah, and we also designed a a multi-level, not too many levels, one or two level parking structure in the back behind the town offices and lobbies, cause you can drive in one level and go up, and then you could go out the other level, cause you get another road there.
Right.
But we all know parking structures are very costly.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, let's take a few minutes and leave this information.
There anything else that we need?
Um, I want you to do this, it's not on there, the dog. Emily presented her first naughty dog list, unregistered dogs.
We have an official public shaming.
Where, you know, no, what we're doing is just making it known publicly in the meeting that she's done what she needs to. And these people have so many days to come in and make good, or, or she six, um, Sean on them. Quite a few. One, two. Oh my god. Forty-two? Shh, don't name any names. I thought my husband was on there first, I was like. Yes, you're right, and you know, it's simply, no, it's not that Patty, it's not that Patty. And, and I heard Emily talking to somebody this morning who came in, oh, so there's minus one, who came in this morning and just thanked Emily for the letter she wrote, it was so sweet, you didn't, you know, say naughty me and shame me, you just said, oh, you might have forgotten, so, so it was very pleasant to hear that, but anyways. Um, so Emily, this is one of the jobs that she hates.
Yeah, now that'd be hard.
Yeah, so, but after this, it will go to, it'll go to Sean's, usually people most of them are cleaned up by them.
Yeah. Well, and I think I recall in past years, sometimes people have lost a dog, and they just didn't respond.
And they didn't end up telling him in here, exactly, right. Right, that does happen, yep, yep. Or they just totally forgot, yeah, well, I think. And these people, yeah, I'm sure he's trying to absorb that, I don't want him to, right, yeah, it's a lot. Um, okay, so I did, we noted that, make sure you note that in the minutes.
Yes.
And did everybody get your chapter seven copy?
Yeah. I actually read mine in seven volumes.
Oh, Judy, you get that, what, what did they used to give you in school, silver star? Gold star.
Well, what we can do here, that's about.
Oh, yes, 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 oh, that'll be so exciting.
I have mostly Dana spent several hours with Mr. Walt and looking at all the, as much information as we could find. And I was very suspect about what was going on. But I am now convinced that originally. There was a different lot along the road that had what was now. I called it an old house Russell directed me, cause his house is even older.
Right.
Old colonial along the road and. So I am hopeful that when this merger occurs, I don't think we can require that they give us. Surveyed lot, but before they could do anything with the other lot, they would have to have a survey. You can't just. Creating a lot without a survey.
You're not creating a new lot. You're de-merging. You're de-merging it. And the highlighted areas have all the footeds, the meds and bounds.
Right.
So our mapper can go back and put that in.
The mapper can do it.
Right.
Nobody's gonna do it.
Yes, so then the mapper will go back and put it in.
To me that we approve the de-merger of this lot.
One second.
All those in favor?
Name it on.
Judy, I, Rusty.
This is if I'm understanding, have they tried to follow this?
Yep.
This is the old house right on the pen.
Yep.
And then the driveway that goes back and then it's a house in the back.
Right.
They say the house in the back is older than the one in front.
Yes.
And so.
But it's been almost.
Driveway to that lot.
Yes, there is. The shared, it's a shared driveway.
I know, but it's not on, is it needed? That's the only thing I would say would need to happen in order.
I think it is. You'll have to. There's a couple new deeds that have been done and it might be, I'd have to look at it.
Yeah, that's one reason I was like, well, I don't know how they create this without being, you know, a need for something.
Well.
I know it's a shared driveway.
It's a shared driveway and that part of this lot will not change at all.
Right.
The, the. There's already a lot lying between the front house and the back house.
Yes.
And some of the land coming. That way.
Yeah.
If you're looking at it, is going to be incorporated with the front one. The driveway won't change. That lot long there won't change.
Right, okay, but I just think they need to document it like. They need to document that driveway has access to the back lot.
I believe the deed from nineteen ninety-four gives an easement or right of way for the driveway to the back lot. Nineteen ninety-four is when that lot.
Right.
Got established.
Okay, great, great.
How about that? I remember.
I know. I was coaching you on in my brain.
Okay, so we did get a vote.
Yeah.
Thank you for your question. You can tell Mr. Paul, thank him very much for his patience.
Yeah, I've had some great visits with him and though it's been good, it's been good.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm not getting any more.
I know.
Any other old deeds. All right, sir, you are.
So I don't, I don't know that that this decision has too much bearing on what we what we have going on here, but. Um, maybe maybe attorneys. So it's more or less that's the New London Hospital Association runs it. They they bought, David Hitchcock bought the New London Hospital and or actually Newport Hospital. And they were disputing whether it was exempt or not. And the Superior Court said that it's not exempt, but it looks like the. Supreme Court is reversing that. But anyways.
Okay.
So go five, you wanna go one by one on this memo or by the number, by question?
Okay, so. We're gonna start with the tax exempt properties. And we've got. Your memo. And we've also got a, I asked for. The list we've got from nineteen, twenty, twenty-one and twenty-two. What? I believe what the town done before or yeah, what these properties are. Oh, and here's twenty-three. So you have made some different recommendations this year.
Yeah.
So let's just go one by one.
Do you want me to kinda give you an overview on how things are, the process has changed a little bit for anyone that's might be.
That'd be great.
So the what what happened was, or actually what was happening prior to twenty twenty-two, I think it was fairly widespread was. The institutional exemptions were kinda left up to the selectmen. And the Department of Revenue, when they did their every five year, they'd run assessment review as part of that. They they looked to see if there's. Required paperwork is filed, et cetera, et cetera. And they never really commented on whether they're. Qualified or not. They just were checking if they were paid worthly. The approach had kind of been a loose hands-off approach, for lack of a better term. Then in twenty twenty-two. There was a town that had. Had someone file a a complaint to the Board of Tax and Land Appeals. About someone else in town's assessment or lack thereof. And so this, this in this. Ensued, so there were some proceedings that happened up there over the course of a couple of years. And it's it's just finally been resolved within the last month or so. Um, but basically the Board of Tax and Land Appeals got involved and in a nutshell, they wanted. The expectation that they have now, and they've been fairly clear on that, is that we. They want us to make sure that there's bylaws on file, so we know what the commission statement is. Which isn't required by law, but I guess maybe kinda is if you ask for them, because. There is a law that says you can ask for stuff like that, seventy-two, twenty-three dash C. So they want the bylaws. They want the certificate of good standing with the Secretary of State, because in order to be exempt, you have to be legally doing business. So that's the reason for that. They wanna make sure that you do annual inspections to make sure that the buildings are being used for their mission and for the bylaws. And then, um.
By bylaws or articles of agreement?
Yeah, yeah, same.
No, they're not the same time. No, articles of agreement are that's the corporate charter and that's the document that creates. They they articulate the mission statement.
Yeah.
Bylaws might repeat the mission statement, but they're not required to do something. Bylaws just say how the corporations govern and how records are nominated and elected.
So we're looking for the documents that has the mission statement.
Okay, that would be the articles of agreement or the corporate charter.
That's what's on file with the Secretary of State and should.
Yes, correct. Bylaws, I don't think.
Okay, so the mission statement.
Yeah. Usually it's Article Two, from what I've seen.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
I don't.
There's no. You're requiring that for me.
There's there's no legal requirement, but as a matter of practice, it's almost always the same article.
It's a pretty standard, standard form. So anyway, so they, that's what they're expecting us to do and. And then, you know. Just because it's owned by a charitable five oh one C three doesn't make it charitable. Or if it's or if it's owned by a church, doesn't make it religious. Et cetera. So they want us to be be more.
Vigilant with that. Okay.
So the basically the the law hasn't changed. The expectations have changed, or at least have become more stringent. So the so the BTLA is technically not wrong, but. So what had happened, what happened up there was there were a few that. That were, they were just probably, there were a couple of churches. That have been churches for a hundred years. Because of this, the town asked for their their. Uh, articles of incorporation or mission statement, what they're looking for. And um, and the certificate of standing. So seventy-five, twenty, excuse me, seventy-two, twenty-three dash C two, Roman numeral two says. If the town asks. You shall respond within thirty days with the requested information. And if you don't, if you respond in thirty-one days. You shall be denied the exemption for.
Yeah.
And and so the town at that point, because of the way the protest had been administered for decades prior. They they received everything they asked for before they sent a tax bill, but not in thirty days. So because of that, the Board of Tax and Land Appeals said you're in violation of our order, which technically I guess they were. And. We're ordering you to send a tax bill to these entities. And they didn't, and they asked how we could do that. So I'm. Been a church for a hundred years. We know people go to church there on Sundays.
Yeah.
Like in church, they didn't like that.
Walks like a duck.
Yeah, they didn't like that.
They didn't like that. This is the Supreme Court.
No, this is what it takes.
Oh, ETLA, okay.
So anyway, so that because of those proceedings, the expectations that were more involved, I guess you could say.
Good.
And and yes, and I've learned a lot in the last couple of years, probably more than I wanted to. But anyways. So so having that background, hopefully that helps you out. And and yes, I have learned some things since twenty nineteen, since twenty twenty-one on on this matter because of this.
Okay.
So.
All right, thank you. That's a good summary and it's a good, uh, cause I was wondering that exact same thing. Wait a minute. It's the same list every year.
Yeah.
And how can it change?
Right, so I was, yeah, so maybe we can, I mean, the American Legion.
Yeah.
Or if you wanna say item number one on this list. They have their own statute. They're exempt, but they do have to file the A nine annually, the inventory of property seeking exemption. That's all been filed and timely filed, so I'm saying that that's.
Recommend that.
Yeah.
That's a perfect example of the change. We never asked them to even give one, because we were told they didn't have to fill out a form, because by statute, they're exempt.
Somehow everybody.
But now they have to.
Okay. Benedictine.
So this is number two. I was I was out there and I I met with. I met with these folks and. There's a couple of things going on here. There's 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 a little house and and they have a bunch of acreage. And they they call it a retreat, but I I asked them. How often they use it? They said two or three times a year. So I'm not sure that rises to the level of use. Like the answer area and that's. That's my question there. And then there's also the excess acreage is. Should be in current use that I think.
It's it is, and they pay on that.
Well, no, that's cross, that's that's.
Oh, okay.
The the excess acreage associated with the.
The house, okay.
Uh, so the little house. Um. If a little house doesn't qualify, then certainly that excess acreage.
Right.
Right, so the the Supreme Court said in Liberty Assembly of God versus Concord that if it's not being used for its purpose, it's supposed to be. That so in that case, this Liberty Assembly of God had a big building that they weren't entirely using and a bunch of excess acres. So it's they have similar. They said to tax the land and tax the building that you're not using.
Can we find out what the definition of using it enough means?
So in the nature conservancy in the fifties, they Supreme Court addressed. Uh, use and that was more an issue of of. There was this nature conservancy had some land out on, I think it was boosting, not boosting, but. New Bernusit Lady Nelson. And they put it in a conservation, but. The only ones that used it were their members. And they said, well, we're at UNH come out here, interdual times a year. And I see the Supreme Court in that case said that they didn't think that was sufficient.
But it's religious. I'd like to see if there's a difference, though.
And also, it's not like this property is being, you know, they're running a commercial.
Or they're vending it out or.
When they're not doing that, they're doing it for religious purposes. They're either using it for religious purposes or sitting.
Or it's not being used, right.
The land piece, the thirty-five point nine eight acres, are they farming it or is it just salad?
It's just there.
Well, they have somewhat head that wants to possibly to keep to maintain the fields.
Right.
So you could maybe split this into the little house, maybe doesn't qualify anymore, but the field could be taxable as current use.
Right, that's what I'm suggesting.
Well, they could put, yeah, they should. We were gonna contact them and see. Explain that so they could put that acreage in current use, but.
I I'm pretty sure that it was in current use before they had it.
I think so too.
Yeah, so if it's it's still in current use, it's just there's no current use for exempt.
Oh, it's just all exempt.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so that's why.
So it's already, if the land part is already.
That's what I thought I said, but I thought he said no.
No. It's it was enrolled in current use before now it's exempt and.
Right, so it doesn't, no, right, current use, that's right.
So, okay, so depending on what you discover about religious.
So.
Is, I would, I would certainly suggest at the very least that the piece of land go back to current use.
Right, so so seventy-two, twenty-three, Roman numeral three is the religious exemption and and it says what's religious. Houses of public worship, parish houses, church parsonage. Occupied by their pastors, convents, monasteries and buildings and land converted to them own use. Occupied directly for religious training. So.
Yeah.
I suppose, I mean, I just, yeah, I mean, I guess a retreat might be a religious use.
I think it qualifies.
Yeah.
Anybody wants to.
Right.
Yeah.
Go ahead and do that.
It's a retreat. They call it their retreat.
Yeah, it's just, I mean, they they themselves said they use it two or three times a year.
Right.
Okay, well, I think we may.
So that's the house.
Do a little investigation, but I think we have a. Pretty good consensus here, but the house qualifies, the land should go back into current use and get.
All right, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Uh, number three is vacant. So that's, that should be assessed as current use, or if it's not ten acres, they could, because I believe it's got a conservation. Easement on it, it could be assessed under the seventy-nine B, I would say seventy-nine and seventy-nine. A and seventy-nine B are the ones I believe are relative to these properties.
So let's see.
Sorry, when you say item three, what?
That's Crossroads Academy.
Okay.
Number three, yeah.
They're not numbered up.
All right, no, no, look at this one, David. David, look at this.
My recommendations.
You want this letter, his written recommendation.
So that I can tell you which one's a lot.
Okay. It's another four oh one.
It's Upper Valley Land Trust.
Yeah.
There you go, right there, David.
Um, okay, so Upper Valley Land Trust, I'm sorry. And we talked about this last year. All the land is vacant.
Right.
Supreme Court said in order for it to be exempt, it must be pertinent to buildings being used and occupied. So it could be.
Current use.
Yeah.
Um, okay.
Yeah, they don't have any buildings on it.
The one that's map four oh two.
Well, they have both. They have properties on four oh one and property, one property on four oh two.
Um, I don't see that here. I don't see, oh, interesting. I don't see that here.
You want me to?
So you missed it. We missed one of them, but that's.
But anyway, so.
Either way.
Well.
Somebody just tracked it down.
Search properties.
Five, six, seven properties.
Right.
Um, okay.
Seven.
So we have given exemptions in the past and we've talked about these. And now you say. They don't qualify for exemptions, but. Some could be in current use.
Yeah, and if it's if they're if they're less than ten acres, they could be in conservation restriction assessment.
Okay.
That. Yeah, she would have to apply.
Both current use and.
Yes.
They're they're almost, they're identical pretty much.
Hmm.
Except you don't have that ten acres to be like conservation.
Right.
They would need to pass some paperwork and get some. Documents.
They would need to if you're depending on what you guys decide.
Okay, there are promotions when they acquire land. They state that they do pay taxes because they pay current use taxes. They don't get exemption. Their land because they're a nonprofit entity. So I I'm just saying that's what they've always said. It's like. When I looked at their proposals. That's how they face objection.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Mm-hmm. So you don't like having the Upper Valley Land Trust in your town owning property and you don't lose your tax dollars, it's the implication.
You get current use with you. Next to nothing you mean.
Um, but so that's a good point. So it could be in the current use or conservation. Um. Okay, so that is.
There is, there is some support for that in this final possibility proceedings, the. Department of Revenue said the same thing up there with the, this happened to be the. Uh, Lakes Region Land Trust, but they denied that as well.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So. Are are we, do we wanna just go through all of these and then we'll make a decision? Or do you wanna make the decision while we're?
It'll be too hard to do it all at once. We should do it as we do.
As we go. So on a number three, which is the Upper Valley Land Trust. Um, I certainly.
That we follow task recommendation.
Okay, and I will second that. All those in favor?
They are.
Judy, I can ban, okay. So we're gonna recommend not exempt. Okay, number four.
Item four on my memo is um, is Spotwoods Academy.
Okay.
And so there's, there's the area that they're using for the campus. I'm suggesting is exempt, but there is excess land there as well. I'm suggesting is exempt, but there is excess land there as well. That, that would be assessed probably in current use, that would be tolerated.
And it looks like it is a hundred and thirty-four acres and it is in current use.
Yeah, it's quite a bit.
The school lot is one point nine four, it says.
Yeah.
I'm a former board chair and.
Oh, yeah, take a break.
It off the board, so I'm not a board member, but I'm just saying for this issue.
Okay.
So Todd, the school buildings, we know are exempt, but it says one point nine four school, the school lot. That's exempt, that's just the land, right?
Land.
There's no additional.
Right, that's, that's the school, what the school is occupied.
Right, so what land are you talking about?
Hundred and something acres.
That's taxable in current use, they pay taxes on that.
So he's recommending that we do that.
Or we continue.
I'm sorry, I guess I misunderstood where you were coming from, cause I'm like, what do you mean to put the. Land in current use, it's already in current use.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, maybe I should just said status quo and. Maybe that one.
Okay. We got it. So Ben, you and I are okay continuing as it has been, I'm.
Yeah.
Okay.
And this, and the same is, this is just the other Crossroads Academy. Item five.
Item five here, four one, the main campus, excess acreage.
That's just the other, right.
That's four oh one and four, there is, I don't know which one in four oh two is for Crossroads.
Wow, fifty-five. Four oh two fifty-five.
Mm-hmm. Fifteen point eight acres. I'm sorry, yeah. So.
Four oh two fifty-five.
Four is talking about the school lot and then the second five is talking about acres.
Right, that's fifty-six.
Crossroads.
So the campus covers two lots, it's on two lots.
Right, and a hundred and thirty-four point oh six of it is in current use and one point nine four is not.
Yeah.
And, and then there's a different lot, four oh two fifty-five, which is fifteen point eight acres.
I don't know where you're getting that, Judy.
That's on the Upper Valley Land Trust.
Yeah. You need to go up top.
If you look on, on Todd's memo. He says four oh two lot fifty-five.
Yeah.
Is owned by Crossroads Academy, even though it is listed on the working out as being.
That's incorrect.
I think that was just a typo.
They're calling, they're calling four oh two fifty-five, that's one, two, three, but it doesn't, I don't think it appears on the map that way.
No, I think it does, but I think you had put, I think you just hit.
Just a typo.
You hit four oh two instead of four oh one.
Right.
For that map, that, I think it was just a typo on that one.
Ah, right, so.
I don't see fifty-six.
We need to really make sure we've got these right.
Yep.
So we're gonna continue with Crossroads as it is, both of those two lots.
Yeah.
Which is really four oh one, okay, so we already talked about that.
They're not on second.
Okay.
I don't get that. Yeah, we need, well, we need to look at Crossroads because there's not one. Where am I? There's not one, two, three, four different cards for Crossroads. They don't have four separate lots.
Those two lots, but there are.
Right. But, yeah, well, we'll look at it, but yeah, okay, sorry.
All right, moving right along, that's number four and five is Crossroads.
So you're, you're have status quo with Crossroads?
I believe so.
Yeah.
The school buildings and the school lot are exempt, the rest is in current use and taxable. Number, that's four and five together. Number six.
So this one, you may wanna check what they're turning on, but I was out there and, and. And took a tour of the facilities and met with the, uh. Couple of representatives from the college and they, they, I got some information from them and they. They say that they, they, the college uses one trail. Three times a week. Maybe, you know, maybe a total of thirty kids or something and then. And then, and then compare that to the total lift tickets, it's like thirty-three thousand is what they said annually for lift tickets, so it's a pretty. Ancillary use for the college, mostly a commercial operation, I would say.
Right, you had written something already and they've decided, I remember we're getting a meeting with Dan. From the college and. Todd. And I, we're gonna, we're gonna sit down, talk about stuff and then you guys are gonna.
We're gonna look at this and I certainly think the land can be in current use. Um, but some of the, we need to walk through this one, um. So we need to know, so the lodge, part of the lodge is exempt, part of the lodge is taxable. That's the land.
But that was done when the college. Was doing things differently out there.
Mm-hmm.
It was definitely set up differently. The dining hall was to be set up so that the Dartmouth College kids could use their dining card, that's gone. Um, you know, there's a lot of different things, they're not using any kind of rooms in it for. College meetings or the college kids, so things have changed significantly.
Right, so that's, that was basically what I gathered was there, the use of, from it by the college is not much.
So that's. It is diminished.
Yeah.
Uh, by the students, by the educational purpose, it's diminished.
What I said is one of our, of our meetings with.
That's what Dana was just saying, we were gonna set up another meeting.
Right, you did the thing with Mark and then Dan. I thought Dan was coming in to have a conversation with Todd at first and then. All that info was being brought to you guys.
So the, the homework here, I think, is just to make sure that there's. Like, uh, Saint Paul's Academy, to double check how they looked at how much use is use. And how much use is just incidental.
Right, so, so that you, Saint Paul's does say that you can have athletic fields.
Right.
But, but the, but a thousand vertical foot drop mountain may be a little more than.
A more.
Well, I mean, if they were using that skiway exclusively for training their ski team, it'd be a different thing.
Right.
For ninety percent for training their ski team and then it was just like a minor, uh, commercial use, but, but it sounds like we've got the tail wagging the dog here.
Well, but don't forget, that was all part of an agreement that encompassed other things also. It encompassed the ambulance bills left from the college kids that the town was having to pay. Free skiing for all school age kids in the town alike, which shouldn't be part of the agreement, it should be just a given. Um, you know, there's other things that, that they sat down and the board and the college worked out and they signed.
So you have a payment in lieu of taxes at the college?
Yes, back then.
So that, that law says that you, if you're, have a property that's totally exempt or partially exempt. You can get into a payment in lieu of taxes.
Right.
I guess it, it doesn't say how much it has to be, but I suppose if you decide at some point it's partially exempt, then I guess you could get into a. Payment or taxes, but that might be a legal question.
Yeah, and I think. Um. If we can't decide this year, I mean, this one, this is one of the few that I think is going to be. Hotly debated, I think the college isn't gonna give up their exempt status easily. Which is not a reason for us not to be the right thing, if we determine that the right thing is that it's no longer qualifying.
Can you, um, can you quantify what, what's at stake here? How, how, how much, uh, if we were to determine that they're not exempt, what would the tax bill? Get sent to Dartmouth College?
Well.
It would be your lodges.
It would be. Four million, your assessed value of four million something and six hundred and seventy-nine thousand, so what's that, five something million?
It'd be five or six million.
It would, uh, assessed value, so you're, yeah, I mean, they pay, what do they pay?
And what's the tax bill on that?
If it's a. Oh, I don't know, I'd have to figure that out.
What's the tax rate?
It was twenty-five, thirty-five.
Yeah.
Twenty-five, so a lot of thousand, million.
Yeah.
So five million.
Right.
Hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Yeah. And now, right now, they pay, I don't know, maybe sixty thousand, no, 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 they pay, they pay over fifty, yeah.
There was some concern when they were.
But.
Yes, it was.
Well, and he's.
And don't remember Dartmouth, it's good at, is getting rid of golf courses.
Yes, and swim homes.
Right, right. Well, and he was, he was very clear that he wanted right, to make it right and make sure we all sat down and talked and all that stuff. Which was nice of him.
Yes, it was very nice, so I'm, I'm putting a big start by this, we really need, that one's gonna need a bunch of attention.
Mm-hmm. But you're gonna have to make a decision before. You're probably not gonna have time to make some sort, well, maybe you will.
When is the deadline?
Uh, when we do the MS one.
Yeah, we have till taxes, so we're also, I forgot.
Few months.
I thought it was July for fifteen.
No.
So it's gotta be.
But if you want your MS one done for August fifteenth, you probably wanna make that decision.
Soon.
Okay, and when are we meeting with them? Do we know?
We don't have.
No, I don't have a meeting date yet, but I will have one ASAP.
In July, cause we'll have to make a decision. All right, thank you, number.
Is there any basis for concluding that any portion of their property is not exempt, do you think?
I, I guess, you know, you could, you could stretch that they, they do use the. They do use that one trail on the, on the Cannon Ledge Trail for, for training their NCAA team.
Mm-hmm.
Is the, do we even know if the trail is closed to other skiers?
It's not.
Yeah.
They're not allowed to ski there.
No, they, they, they say the NCAA restricts how much, how often they can train.
Right.
Oh, not limited use.
Some food for thought there. Um, earmark that, we've gotta come back to it, we've gotta make a decision and then.
So.
Number seven.
So that, number seven, I mean, I, I scheduled an appointment, they didn't, they didn't, it never didn't happen, so I, I haven't had a chance to. Expect that property to make sure it's being used for its religious purposes. And that's where it goes back to seventy-two, twenty-three Cs, they had, they didn't comply with what we're looking for. Been over thirty days, so.
But I do know they have church there every Sunday.
Yeah, but yeah, I mean, this, this kind of circles back to what I was telling about my opening.
Yeah.
And their lot is already in current use and they pay taxes on that.
So I would move that we leave this the way it is, but we need to send them a letter saying they must provide us with some information and. That's skirting what you say the new law is.
They must meet with Todd out there and let him look around like. We asked and, and like we set up, right.
How do you tax a church?
Right.
Uh-huh. Saw it happen firsthand.
I saw.
I saw, I saw them, I saw the town get ordered to send them a tax bill in February, uh, uh, the following year after.
Oh, wow. After everything.
Tax bill went out in November, February, they said, sent them a tax bill.
We're falling down.
But you could, I know, but you could approve it and then we can have Todd meet with them before the MS one is done or whatever. That, so effective, I guess.
Beyond the thirty days, so we're skirting the law.
Technically.
Eh, it's a church.
So then there's, then there's the, the, the abatement for good cause, which is RSA seventy-six sixteen, Roman number one. And the BTLA says you can't use. Abatement for good cause to circumvent the exemption.
Right.
Rule. But there's a twist. The DRA was ultimately in charge of the exemptions and they said, wow. If they had provided all the information timely, then they would have qualified, so in this case, it might be good cause to grant the abatement. And they did, so that's, that happened, so. I haven't seen any recants on the BTLA's position, but that's, that's, that worked around in, within that case.
So I would like to move in this case that we deny the exemption, but we grant an abatement because it qualifies for the exemption. But make them have to meet with you so next year, if they are, if they've done what they needed to do, they're exempt.
So, uh, I mean, we, we, we wouldn't give them an abatement until we issued a tax.
Right.
And they have to file for the abatement.
And you have to tell them that they're gonna get a tax bill.
Yeah, I got it.
So you're saying you wanna tax them, have them file for abatement and then go to the, okay.
When they get taxed, they can be told that they should have met with you when they said they would, they need to file this, they need to do what it says. I'm sorry, but it's the law often. And that we are amenable to you on the abatement if they file for it. You don't think we should do that?
No, I think that might be more technically correct than anything, but yeah, so, alright.
How do you guys feel? I mean, I'm getting silence here, I'm not the only one making a decision.
On the bottom. I think the BTLA is reaching in the positions that they're taking with respect to this other thing, and I think there's a whole body of federal tax law that says. You can't tax someone, that, that, that a minor administrative error can't be used as the basis for imposing tax. Uh, particularly when there's no harm, the results from the error, so they send you the stuff after thirty-one days.
Yeah.
And it's supposed to be in thirty, that. Now get thrown out of tax court, now get thrown out in federal district court.
Thrown out of any court.
I, I agree with, because there are some, we have just Supreme Court cases that say it's not supposed to be subject to, I, I can, I can tell you which ones they are, I just can't remember them off the top of my head.
So what action would you rather take? Want to grant the exemption?
I'm okay with that too.
They still haven't met with Todd.
I suppose you, they did, they did respond, so they, they did respond.
Right.
And they did make an appointment, they just didn't show for the appointment, so they did respond in thirty days, right, I think?
Yeah.
Yeah, and she couldn't get in.
Couldn't get in, so maybe we can get them to get me in. That would be good.
Well.
That's probably a church. Obviously. To what I said.
Every Sunday morning I go by and there's cars in the parking lot.
It'll be hard.
My daughter Christmas presents for all of you.
Yeah.
So how do we wanna go, guys?
I agree the exemption thing.
Okay.
So you're moving to leave the exemption and Ben.
Okay, David.
Sorry.
And if it gets kicked out, we have a back door.
Well, we're gonna have that, with the exemption, she's gonna meet with Todd and show her the bu, show him the building.
Yeah, it, it can be any, anybody over eighteen can show me through.
Anyone that has a key.
Yeah.
Oh, I can get a key, I'm over eighteen.
Yeah.
All right.
Eight, I think is okay.
Eight is the one congregation, the church, this is another one we spent some time. Charge sheds, the church.
So they tell me they use those for parking on the service, so that's, that's a.
And, and for church functions that they have.
Cause I wasn't sure if those were, cause they have names on all the, I didn't know if they were exclusive for each person.
If the people named.
They were original people with that.
Yeah.
That's right.
I think you're, I think you're.
Had their horse and buggy parked there.
Parking there, you'd be sitting a bunch of.
No, so, so anyways, I, I did verify that when I was out there.
Okay. So we're good with the church being exempt, that church. And we've got, they have, uh. I thought somewhere they had some money. But maybe not, okay. Oh, they do, sixteen acres in current use.
Yes, they have a wood lot too, yeah.
Yeah, okay, number nine, oh, we're ahead of the good to mine.
So, so nine is, I, I think they would qualify because they, our school, they do have special needs kids there. Et cetera, et cetera, but there's the issue of not filing timely. And of course. Town sent letters to everyone, reminders before the deadline. I don't know, I don't know how you do that.
But she sent a letter explaining why she was untimely.
So she, so she did send a letter.
Right. Well, her, her, um, she didn't know about it, we had sent her a letter, she doesn't, didn't get the letters. Their treasurer, no, well, this is actually true, I know, cause I know the treasurer, their treasurer left. Their new treasurer didn't know anything about it. Um, so you know, there's, and, and the director of the school, which is the one I spoke with Kelly. You know, she doesn't do that kind of bookwork, so.
So there was a change of staff.
So it was like, uh.
Yeah.
What it, what is, what is that special?
And then, haven't filed hardship with it and then or.
No, you can.
So the, so the law for this, cause they did file their financials before June first, and that, that's the one that doesn't have any accident, mistake, or misfortune, except it late. But, but for the A nine, which is the inventory, if it's filed late, you can accept it under accident, mistake, or misfortune.
Right.
But the, but the, the, uh. There isn't, there isn't a very good definition of accident, mistake, or misfortune, but the Department of Revenue's administrative rules. Four oh one, point oh one says that it's something that, uh. Paraphrasing, but a reasonable person wouldn't be expected to account for. Illness, accident, you know, like physical accident, something like that, so I mean, maybe changing.
Lack, lack of staff to do it, right, I, yeah.
Gets stashed away and the new guy is hung out to dry.
And the Board of Tax and Land Appeals has, has been critical of the the town for for accepting things not. Completely filled out or properly filled out, and I said, well, you know, there's. People that are volunteers and they really don't know, and their responses, they should know. I said, well, okay.
Well, they do know now, but now the director has it on her calendar because she feels like there's the backup, you know. Well, I don't think they do. Their treasurer used to just do it, because the treasurer used to do the Baptist church. The Lyme Congregational Church and the nursery school.
Okay, what do we wanna do? We don't want, you know, we didn't Baptist church, we're on the, uh. I think we should grant the exemption, it's a school.
I mean, I I don't want to think, well, you know, overly harsh here. I'm just, I'm just giving you the technical advice that as I know it, I don't necessarily agree with it, but.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
If we, if we deny them and have to go through a whole process, it's coming across, you know, times, that's everybody's comment.
And there's no question.
There's no, there's no here, here. Yeah, so in in the vein of the one you you just granted prior, I guess that's consistent. Pathways, they didn't file their paperwork.
No, they're not a state facility.
They get the grants, but they also filed the accident, mistake, or misfortune.
Okay, because.
You think that they should, they should know.
Pathways has experienced turnover.
They have that every year.
I'm I'm sure they probably have a lot of turnover there.
They actually used to, they used to pay a. Not a pilot, no, not a pilot, in, yeah, in Lewaf. But then they, you know, couldn't afford it and they were really struggling and then they changed.
When they started, they were a state.
Yes, they were.
Because the argument many people gave for opposing that construction was, once a state facility. Always a state facility, you could have a jail there, you could have a rehab facility, you could have whatever.
I say they're not, but I don't believe they are. Maybe, yeah.
Yes, was a slightly different. Well, what do we wanna do with pathways? They're exempted?
They filed late, but you think they missed, they, you think they qualify for misfortune, right?
Lies to the.
Changing staff is like, I think, this under the.
Mistake.
I mean, that's consistent on other.
Okay, oh, that's different, yes. All right.
Okay, Lyme restoring, they also didn't timely file. That's the second, the second year in a row they didn't timely file.
Now, the ones you're saying, yeah, did somebody move that?
Hey, we gotta go back to the last one, I will move that they're exempt, I need a second.
And I didn't get one on the Congo church either, did I just miss that? You said yes to them. David, second Judy, thank you.
And all those in favor.
Thank you, sorry.
All right, now we are at Lyme restoring, so they missed last year as well. So supposedly last year they got a little slap on their hands and but we granted the exemption. I can't do that again.
I don't remember, yeah. Well, they, they pay partial.
Right, because they have that apartment.
Yep, the apartment, they pay taxes on and the building.
The building is valued at like twenty six.
Five, twenty six, yeah.
And and the other.
They're gonna get a twelve thousand dollar tax bill. Something like that, I don't doubt they have the resources to pay that. You know what, they should, we should, yeah, they should apply for an abatement and. Tell us on vending deed that they won't.
Did they get a letter of misfortune, mistake, and all that stuff?
Did they send a letter?
I was thinking they did.
Or they did send a letter, yeah.
Yeah, they did, because they have a new treasure, I think. Well, I think, I think they were the same treasure.
I think so, too.
The other ones.
He's recently assumed the role of treasurer and I'm learning the regulatory requirements of a nonprofit. I humbly ask the select board for their understanding.
All right.
David.
I'll move it.
All those in favor? Okay, and and we can somehow let them know.
I think we, I think we write every single one of these people, even if they're just, they were right or not. A very to the point letter that says, look, these are the laws, we can't, you know, usurp them, we have to have this stuff.
Next year.
All right.
The guillotine fall.
Couple more.
Northern Woodland, so this one here, I mean, I wasn't sure that this was, this had the test of charitable mission. When they granted them. Still not sure, but you you might check with your attorney on that, because I think they're the ones that advised.
I'm pretty sure we checked with them the first time, that's right.
And and the first time we did this roundabout thing where not all of the building was used for. Northern woodlands, but I believe now it all is.
No, only part of it is exempt.
We have, I'm pretty sure we have that.
Yep, it is.
Can we, um, can we check with Laura and just confirm their view on this question? Exemption hasn't changed.
Yeah, especially, I don't know, like I said, I don't know if this new London Hospital Association will make a difference, but. But these Osprey proceedings may have changed her opinion, because she was involved in Center Harbor.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, okay.
Well, it's just a little, yes, a little. In the common, I, I, off the top of my head.
They don't, they don't even have an acre of land, yeah.
And they do use, taking people out there, pay too often.
I thought it was more than that, I thought they went all the way down.
I mean, that's a, that's a magazine publication. They they recharge for subscription.
Yeah, well, I don't think you'll find the, find magazines.
But they also do have a lot of educational things that they do, um.
Yeah, they they do donate some to the schools and whatnot.
And they give lectures and walks and all kinds of stuff, but, okay, so that's number twelve, and then we've got number thirteen.
So this one, Laura, yeah, but on number twelve for the woodlands, we're sending info to Laura.
And number thirteen, you have to get somebody into.
For crying out loud, you guys.
Well, let me just say.
There's no sense of going anywhere, because you can't, no, you don't have.
You don't go anywhere, that's right.
I believe that.
You know, I'm gonna just say something, this. Kind of changes daily. On profits, it's down, uh, we hired a lawyer last year to convert with Laura. We thought we had everything straight down, so I don't know where it suddenly not straight now. You suggested that, you know, as a terrible, we weren't benefiting people. Well, the indefinite segment of population, but I I wouldn't be offended if you, if you sent it to Laura and I would totally refer that. I don't think they grabbed a bad man shit, I'm just thinking it doesn't fuck, it doesn't.
Well, it has gone to Laura, already. Well, no, not this year, but she, she was involved with the lease and that stuff. And before.
But that's open to the general public.
Like three years ago.
We should speak, we should get legal counsel on, on whether qualified or not. And you and I shouldn't be talking about it anyway, because we're biased and we can't.
Well, I know, but I'm, you know, he's, he's made points to.
Yeah, but you, you, you wanna talk to Todd about that, you should do it outside.
No, you can't.
No, but we're gonna send it to Laura for an opinion. And then I can set up another time with Michael Hensley to come and do his thing. Fill in.
And then we're gonna also set up with college and.
Well, you can't do it now, but. Because. Well, but that was, we, we planned ahead, I, I talked with the attorney, I, I did it, oh, yeah.
Well, I'm just saying. I'm just saying, I was.
Thank you for the.
Yes, yes, that's what you're doing, thank you.
We've got, uh, a couple that are going to go to Laura. We've got, set up a meeting at that college, pretty ASAP. Not exempt following pods recommendation, we're gonna look at the religious issue. Little house, uh, this was then fifteen, that's, I need to get back to us.
And you, yeah, you couldn't vote on Ben's today anyways, because it's gotta go to Laura.
Yeah, and like I said, this isn't, I may not agree with it, I just, I'm trying to be as technical as I can.
Trying to do your job.
Because of this stuff.
Appreciate that very much. This has been good, I hope never to have to do this again.
Every year you're gonna have to do it.
I think. We've got the non-public, but before we do that, we need to talk about what kind would, would talk here. What kind of a.
Oh, yeah. So, so what? So the, the Department of Revenue is suggesting, and they've been pretty insistent the last few years, that because you're doing your cyclical. Review of the properties, twenty or twenty five percent every year, you wanna call it a cyc- cyclical re- revaluation. But you're having the cyclical portion of the cyclical revaluation done under a separate contract, so you're not really asking. A vendor to do that, you want them to do the statistical side of it, because you're already taking care of the cyclical side, so there's, you want a statistical. That's what you should be sending our appeals out there.
Okay, so, but the, the fourth, the fourth, um. Is this year the full, no, next year would be the fourth cycle.
This is the fourth, this is the fourth year, so you'll have.
The fourth quarter.
You'll have twenty five, you have, you would have to do it in twenty six.
We're doing it each year.
We're doing it on the fourth year.
Fourth year is the, you do a quarter each year.
Roughly.
And then the fifth year, you.
Well, we should be finished, the, we should be finished through the cyclicals next year. So, but you would want a budget to have that done in addition to the.
But we wanted to have whatever got done, done next year, which is a year early. Here's, here's my thought, first of all, I understand how that works. There. More than just a few individuals who really were more than just not happy with. Trying to put together over those four years, the fifth one, the last time it was done. I know it's a really big deal, but it seems to me you should do a full revaluation. Someone, same person, different person comes in, does the building, does the whole town. Can't believe this, I never swore. So it does the whole town and then does the. Overlay, looks at the sales, and it's a terrible time, because we've still got some COVID stuff out there, we've still got some of those spiky sales. But that's my thought, you guys, I I'm sure that Todd doesn't think that's right, I know. I'm pretty sure Dina doesn't wanna do that.
No, well, I just don't think there's.
In general, what the cost differential is between what Judy's suggesting and, I I'm not asking you for a bid. So it's twice as much, yeah, and what would, I mean, in round numbers, approximately, what would you expect that to cost? Or can you give me any kind of ranges? How how big of a number is?
All right, a hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand for the full, yeah, so it'd be fifty thousand for the.
Can I say something right here? It's not about the money. My com, no, I'm just gonna say my comment has nothing to do with the money, my, well, kind of it does, but. My, my issue is that we have people who go around and do twenty, twenty five percent of the town, whatever they do. And they measure, they measure and list and do those kinds of things. So that stuff's already there. The problem was, is with our sales, our analysis, our statistical data. It's not with, whether your barn is twenty four by twenty four, why do we wanna pay? All this money for another company to come in and redo all that? We want them to come in and analyze the properties and the property types, perform. Um, the analyst on the current sales, the statistics, all that.
So, so what, what would happen under the statistical update, is you would, you would take the sales that occurred over two years. Measure and list those, so you go out and measure those to make sure the data is correct, and then based on that data, hopefully it's correct, but you know, people do renovations. Slowly sell and whatnot, then you would change the rates internally associated with the data to generate a new assessment. Those are the selling parts of those fifty or sixty properties, whatever it is. And then when you're fairly comfortable with how that's calibrated, you push that same rates. Apply it to the data for the whole town.
And if you did the full analysis, then what's the difference there? What, 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 what's that loss?
Well, so like Dina was saying, we're probably within the last five years, someone's measured. Every place in town, if you can get to it, you know, if it's posted and you can't get on a property, then.
I understand that, and I'm not criticizing you in any way, I'm just basing this on. The things that were said. And trying to. Start fresh.
They don't understand.
I do understand.
Correct me if I'm wrong, so the concern is, one person may have had their house looked at this year. And another person may have had their house looked at five years ago. And I mean, this could, could change, but there's no law that says you have to do it. Ever, there's a good process, the I double A O has standards that says every four to six years, so it's within that.
And so can I ask also if, if we did either the statistical or the full reval, well, especially the statistical. The houses that sold, you know, you're only gonna look at the last two years. What about those few houses four years ago that sold for? Gobs of money more than anybody would have ever thought, will they get caught in this, will they get looked at especially, or?
Their assessments will change based on the recalibrated rates. For those new, those sales that happened, so if there's similar circumstances, that would just apply. To the non-sold properties. But, you know, I mean, the market's up. Forty percent, you know, so I don't know that it's not uniformly up forty percent, but.
And Judy, I was saying, they don't understand, not to you guys, that was to the general public, not understanding. What the difference is in the, in the processes.
So I guess if you want everyone looked at, like physically measured, having a full revaluation in that one year. Makes sense, I don't know that it would probably dramatically differ by doing it, but it could be. I mean, we find, we do find things when we get out there that occur over five years.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, well, that's living in a house. Yeah, well, that's living in a house.
Yeah.
Tackle that room more, you.
Yep.
Build the deck, the deck turns into a porch, porch turns into a damn marrow.
Insulated with running water.
Guest room. Got that a lot in October.
There is a, there is a shortage of assessors and it's, it's not getting better.
Yeah, boy, look at them all. Well, listen, you guys, I think we need to decide. Um, the RFP has to go out. And I'm just me, I'm trying to avoid a whole lot of heartache, but we're really feeling like this sounds really bad. I'm living on a good skin, but a hundred thousand dollars of debt, we make a big difference.
Well, the delta is empty back then.
Right, that is, that is true.
So it's not very much.
It's not very much.
In the scheme.
Um, but we need to think about, because it's a three board.
Well, the school just spent two hundred thousand dollars.
Just, it depends on what you consider a lot of money is. What I consider a lot is very different than what you do, obviously. And that's fine. That's why the everyone's different.
I mean.
Yeah.
What percentage?
Are you kidding me? I'm breaking out in a sweat thinking about spending a hu- over a hundred thousand dollars on this.
And that's what we.
And it's not my money.
At the budget committee, when I said if we did a reval, it would be a hundred thousand. I wasn't wrong.
No, you weren't. You were right.
Is the camera.
You're right. When you're right, Judy's right.
But, um.
Yeah.
So take the money back.
Well, it might even be more now.
But.
Because there is such a shortage of assessors. You never know.
Well, that's another.
That's okay.
So
and and I realize you may not, you don't have any magic crystal ball, but we're gonna put out an RFP. Are we gonna get, um, are we more likely to get responses? Uh, if it's a, if it's the smaller statistical revaluation than if it's the full evaluation of uh, and what is the, what is the likelihood of getting a good response from people on those two options?
You you would, you you're better off as far as reception if you're just doing a statistical because you eleven hundred parcels in town.
Seventeen hundred. Oh, no, never mind. Sorry. Population seventeen oh four. Yeah.
Around eleven hundred, so like eight hundred houses or something like that.
Yeah.
It's gonna take a couple of months, one guy for a while, a couple of months to do that.
To do the statistical.
No, no, the full, to measure.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, if, if, let's say, ten weeks. Yeah, because of weather and stuff.
Right.
And we don't get any response.
Well, that's. That could happen.
Oh, yeah, it could happen. It Colbrook, Colbrook is in year five, just for an example. Colbrook's, of course, is much farther north, but they're in year five, so they have to do it by constitution and statute. So put out the RFP. Don't have responses yet? Yeah. So, so now what? Because you have to do it by constitution, but you can't find anybody to do it. So I did ask our Department of Revenue's crap, and he said that they could petition the vote of tax and land appeals to order them to do it. I said, okay. And then who does it when you?
Right.
Someone to do it. He's like, he didn't think about that.
Yes.
I said, do you know who's, you know who's gonna, would have to do it? Department of Revenue.
Oh, yeah.
And.
And they don't do it all there.
They're.
Yeah. So.
I suspect we'll have to have a large company come in and do it.
Well, I would think if you're gonna do a full reval, yeah.
Not individual vision or somebody, right?
I mean, average, I won't go to the software.
Right.
An idea that you might not get taunted. Is there any feedback to do in an RFP that's both? One is a physical and one is a vote and see what kind of responses you get. Then you can decide whether you're gonna build a big gun.
Yeah, I was thinking of that.
At least if you've got somebody willing to do one or the other, at least you know.
Yeah.
And I don't know if there's a throwback. I mean, if somebody looking to do this sees two RFPs next to each other, what do they do? I don't know what that happens. I, I mean, I'd be tempted to just send out two RFPs. And see what comes in.
Can't think that they would be learning that.
And they actually give us a a more, um, you know, Todd has been kind enough to give us his sort of off the cuff sense about what the cost would be, but that'd give us a more concrete uh, understanding of what the cost would be, and then we could measure that against what we think the benefits are.
Right.
Or we may get nobody who wants to do the full thing.
Well, I was gonna say.
Give us some, some information.
Yeah, from a, from a vendor standpoint, I would ask you, what do you want? For revalue or statistical updates, so.
Yeah.
But, but you could maybe do the 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 value side of things and then the data collection side of things and two separate RFPs, you're gonna get the same, same thing done.
Well, and you're not, oh, sorry, you're not really doing it to see which is the bargain, where you're definitely not doing to see which is the bargain money wise, you're doing it to see who or what you could get. Right, 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 right.
Because, because if you have two different vendors, then you, then it starts to get tangled up and when it gets done and why it's not done and.
Right.
You know, that type of thing.
Um, Dan and Jordan, uh, leaving aside the cost of town to give them options, is there do you, do you guys have a feeling about wanting to do one approach versus the other for other reasons? Like, is it massively more work for you guys to do the full revaluation than to do the statistical or because that's something I would want to take into account too. If it's the same, then, or if it's not a big difference.
If Jordan's doing all the data entering.
Oh, yeah.
That's a huge difference right there.
And I remember, I mean, you don't know if this necessarily will happen, but when we did the reval, we got a lot of abatements and stuff. So there's a lot of administrative stuff with that, but you can't really bank on that, so.
That's gonna happen either.
Well, right.
Because people.
I mean, but versus thirty or so that we got that year to six this year, it's a little.
It's a huge difference usually, yeah.
Typically, the year after the revales, when you see the abatements, you resolve them and you don't see anything too bad until it happens.
For a few more years, right.
Okay.
Um, I still have one question though, and and so if we do both, um, I want to talk about the date. Um, I was talking to Todd about the date and I had done a cutoff of having everything ready to go to you guys in August so that we could meet the September first MS one deadline. And Todd believes that that's not a realistic date if somebody's gonna do, especially for, they're gonna do a, if you're gonna do a full reval. So that means that we won't, we would not meet the MS one date and that we would put a different, a a date of October first or fifteenth or something like that into the contract instead of August because it gives them more time. I need to know that you're okay with that.
What are the consequences of that year?
Well, when you're late.
It's a year from now.
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
So if we award this contract, they can start like.
They can't start this year. You got no money for them to be starting this year.
There's money. Yeah, I think there is money, but never mind, we're not. They could start earlier, or if they had to wait, they could wait till January, but I don't know why they can't make an August date and keep it.
Yeah, well, I don't know. I don't know.
You don't think they can make an August date?
Oh, man, that's not impossible.
It takes, even the full one takes three months. If someone says that's.
Chances are they're not gonna start in January.
The measuring list part, well, first you have to wait, you pretty much have to wait for the snow and all.
It's winter, right.
March or May, yeah.
Right.
Then you, you also need to wait for the sales to occur. That would end on April first. And so, and so that would, I mean, you could do your measure and listing before that, but at some point.
Can't do your, you can't do the statistical piece of it until after.
Right, and so then you're gonna, you're gonna wanna have a parcel by parcel field review, and that's gonna take a couple of weeks. Or say ten, twelve, ten or twelve days. And then you have to do a data entry from that. And that all needs to happen after the analysis is done and whatnot. And.
So you're talking the full reval is the one that's.
No, even if you were just, even if you were doing a statistical, you, you would still need, you want, you need time, leave time for notifications, right? You 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 give, you do your values. You do your field review. You do the data entry from the field review. You, um, send out letters, impact notices, notifying everyone of their new value, or at least where they can find it. Give them a few weeks to make appointments, so that's, that's gonna take up a month for all intents and purposes right there. And then after you do all the hearings, you're gonna have to review what happened at the hearings and finalize everything, and that'll be a couple of weeks. Probably. And so that is, it it doesn't take a lot of time.
So it goes into October, so then you you your tax bills go out like December first.
Maybe, I mean, I, I, most of the time, it it's two hundred towns a year file an extension roughly and there aren't that many that do reassessments that don't.
It just depends on when the DRA, you know, they put us in a queue, and if you're after September first, you know, you're just pushed way back in the queue, and it means that I, that we will get our tax rate later. Now, I don't know what kind of situation we'll be in next year with our TAM. So I, yeah, and that's really the big thing for me, is that the longer we have to use our TAM, the later we have to put our bills out, the higher those interest payments are, and you know, when you start getting up there, it's concerning. But I want you guys to make that decision.
Yeah, I mean, you can do it two years ago. You couldn't do extensions the last two years.
No. Absolutely not.
Didn't this year, but we did the year before.
Two years ago.
Two right now is that, at least if you were to hit the TAM right now, it's pretty hot.
Yeah.
Well, we're gonna have to start using our TAM.
I know we are, but.
And the interest rate is very high.
Five years ago, it was two percent or three percent or something, and now we're gonna get six point seven.
Six, yeah, or six point two seven, something like that. Yeah, that's high. The TAM's gonna be a lot this year.
Yeah, but you know what, I mean, it doesn't seem like there's a way out of that box in the year that you're doing a revaluation. It would either be this year or or next year.
Yeah, I don't think the revaluation accounts for that. It's, I mean, that doesn't make it more or less. It just.
It means that.
It is.
If we do the revaluation, it sounds like it's a practical matter. Realistically, we kind of have to expect that we're gonna be filing MS one extension. So that's gonna.
You're gonna be late, right, right.
Our use of the TAM, and so there's, there's a little cost to the town. In addition to hiring someone to do the revaluation, we're gonna pay a higher interest rate than I do because we're, it's just gonna take us longer to get everything.
Correct. And as long as you guys come with that, then hey, there you go. It's your decision.
I can make a point.
I'm looking at that too. I want it done right. I I think that we can't drive what we're gonna do. I.
Well, I think it's been done right in the past.
Absolutely.
Absolutely do as well, but we need to we need to make sure that there's time to do the process and not rule the timeline by the cost.
Right.
At the firing.
Right, well, I have had boards who have been very strict on getting the MS one in on September first, and there's no reason why it can't be, was the attitude, so. I'm happy to hear that the October change date is okay with you.
Yes, it's, the way I approach is, is what's the, what's the end date and then back off from there. And if you're putting a month for the, for the letters to be mailed out, the appointments to happen, and you're gonna, you know, you're.
Gotta be September.
You're gonna, you're gonna.
Right.
Yeah.
Get all that stuff.
Right, right. So I think, yeah, I mean, you could certainly say we would like to meet the MS one deadline. Uh, understand that may be unrealistic. People can tell us what they think they can do.
Yeah, just because it's in the RFP doesn't mean that's what it has to be, right?
And I'd like to get those out.
Yes.
Show the road.
Were you guys okay with that written RFP? That you got, other than the date?
Brackets.
I had, yeah, well, I gotta.
There was stuff that needed to be.
Yeah.
And so we're gonna send out one for a full revaluation.
Right, statistical, yeah.
Excellent, excellent.
Yep.
And, um.
Or do we send out one where our P asking for both?
I think if you put both on it, it might make some people deter and deter, deter, yep, back from, from doing it. And it may, might make it confusing, yeah.
Um, yeah.
All right.
Let's move along to that.
Cool.
Thank.
Thank you.
Board needs to stay. I would really like to thank Todd for coming.
Yeah, thanks for that.
Something good stuff is a lot you do and then.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I, I'm just trying to be as technically correct as I can be, whether I agree with it or not, it's a different story.
Right.
Right.
We are, we're trying to follow your lead, but also use some of our manpower to do the right thing.
There, there, but I'll, I'll see if I can find those, those Supreme, the Supreme Court, I'll look at that too, but the Supreme Court does, does have a couple of rules. It says it's not supposed to be overly burdensome and technical, so there's a little bit different than we're.
Yeah, interesting.
Experiencing.
Yeah.
Those are the big guns. They get to change things up.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
All right.
And Rusty, thank you.
Good work.
Right.
And, um, we are gonna go into non-public session.
Hey.
All right, you guys.
Bye, Todd. Thank you.
Happy fourth.
Thanks, sure.
Now, pay a little more interest, but hell.
Okay.
If the school is, can spend two and a half million dollars to put in automated window warnings.
Yeah.
Okay, so Judy moved and who seconded?
All seconded.
And I'm gonna turn this off in just a second when I finish, right? Yes, yeah.